Good evening. We are now going to call the September Board of Education meeting to order. If you would stand for our pledge, I would like to invite Cadet Anika Reedy and Cadet Jarrell Peel from our Martin County High School J R O T C to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Scott?
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity once again, you have given us to come here tonight as the school board and, dear Father, you pray to be with us, all the decisions that we make tonight be pleasing in our sight and pleasing in the education for our young folks. Thank you for our staff, our teachers, but most of all, dear Father, we thank you for our students. Just worked so hard the past couple of years and it's really brought the education here in Martin County up to a new level that's never seen in years. We thank you for all the hard work they do, pray you will give them a great year this year. Bless them and be with them. Pray you bless each and every one tonight as they return to their homes, give them safe travels until we meet again. For all these things, I ask you to most hold your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Can we get a motion for approval of the agenda?
The move.
Second. They're properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now we need approval, if I could get a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent agenda approved. Ms. Sarah, you have some recognition for us?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Madam Chair, Board, thank you for another opportunity to tell you a little bit about what's going on with our students. I'd like to ask Cadet Reedy and Cadet Peel to come back up and join us. Uh, we want to thank you ladies, you can sit right back up here. We want to thank you both for leading us in the pledge tonight. And I want to take this opportunity to tell you a little more about what they've been up to and where you can find our Gator J R O T C unit in the coming weeks. Fourteen J R O T C cadets recently participated in the Towne Robinson cleanup, um, on the August thirtieth. We have a picture there. Our ga- uh, cadets have their own, um, their own color guard for all of our home football games. And the J R O T C has a new spirit team. They will be in the home football games, running the spirit team flag in the end zone, doing push-ups, supporting the team and showing off the J R O T C pride. September nineteenth, uh, there is a fundraiser night at Jersey Mike's. The twenty-sixth, they'll be doing the colors at a variety of ways at Stampede. And in October eighth, hosting a blood drive at the Martin County Auditorium. So we hope you'll come out and support their efforts with a blood drive. They are under the command of Captain Tanya McDade and First Sergeant Jacqueline Toy, who's also with us tonight. So we want to thank you all for what you're doing. And we also want to point, um, get special recognition for Cadet Reedy is a recent Army Basic Training graduate and will attend individual training next summer to become a pol- military police officer. Would you like to join them for a photo real quick? Thank you very much. We are so proud of this group and they've just blo- they've bloomed since I have been with this district. It's really been amazing to watch. Thank you all. And we have one more recognition tonight who cannot be with us, but we cannot go and not tell you about our first Gold Star winner of this school year. Behind every great school district is a team of caring and dedicated professionals who make student success possible. Many, many times, our hard work happens quietly, behind the scenes and without any spotlight. That is definitely the case with our first Gold Star winner of the school year. Please help us join in celebrating Warner Hollis, our veteran HVAC technician, and I believe he's the longest-serving member of the maintenance department here. Um, his selfless dedication, expertise and just his, his ability to care. South Creek Elementary was willing, was ready to open to students on opening day despite a near crisis air conditioning challenge that would have delayed the start. So without a word said, he made it happen and school started as it was supposed to. So thank you, Warner, for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. Okay, Dr. White.
Yes, thank you, Chair Purvis. Good evening, everyone. The twenty-four, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is off to an incredible start and I'm excited to share some of the highlights with our Board of Education and our community at large. We began this year with an absolutely amazing convocation. We brought together every member of the Martin County Schools' family. Our theme this year was Be the Light and it challenged us to shine brightly for our students, to shine brightly for each other and to shine brightly for our entire community. We reminded ourselves that light drives out darkness, light guides the way and light inspires hope. This theme is more than words for our school community. It's a commitment. And as we gathered together at convocation, the energy in the room was contagious. You could feel that this year would be powerful. And as we committed to work together to offer our children the experience of a lifetime, the Martin Experience, staff left convocation smiling, connected and ready to bring their very best to every single child. That commitment has already been visible in our classrooms, our hallways, our buses and our ballfields. Our team has embraced this theme in a way that is transforming not just our schools, but our culture as a school district. This year, you will see Martin County Schools be the light. Our open house was absolutely amazing. Shout out to our school administration, all of our school staff. They were highly organized and simply put, they were filled with excitement. Hallways were decorated with welcoming themes. Teachers greeted families with smiles and parents were reminded to complete their online paperwork. Hint, parents, please complete your online paperwork. And that helped us get off to an amazing start. So thank you so much to our staff, um, everybody within our schools. I feel like we had one of the best open houses to date, so great job. The first day of school was also a huge success. Our buses ran smoothly for the beginning of the year. Classrooms were ready and our staff went above and beyond to ensure our students felt welcomed and supported. There were photo booths, balloon arches, special signs and so much joy. This is a testament to the hard work of our entire team. Our bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance department, our child nutrition staff, teachers, teacher assistants, administrators, central office employees, every single person in our school system family played a role in creating a positive and safe environment for our students. And we are off to an exceptional start to the year. This year is already one for the record books. Martin County High School has made history. No longer classified as a low-performing school, having exceeded growth for the first time ever. Let me say that again. They had, are the first high school ever in Martin County to exceed growth, which puts their growth in the top five to ten percent of all high schools in the state of North Carolina. They posted the highest graduation rate under this current accountability model at ninety-four percent as a school and eighty-point-three as a four-year cohort. That is the second highest in history. These are truly historic results that reflect the commitment of our teachers, our students, our leaders and every staff member in our school system. The Board of Education, along with central office staff, surprised the school on Thursday with balloons and cookies for everyone to commemorate this historic occasion. And not only did Martin County High School have some exceptional results, but our entire district had some exceptional results, which we will talk about later in the meeting tonight. In August, we hosted our early college signing night, a special evening celebrating students' commitment to rigorous academic work. We had the staff from Martin Community College here, as well as all of our freshman early college students. They actually signed their commitment, their agreement to be a part of the program and their commitment to graduate in four years with their certificate or degree of their choice. This program, new to Martin County Schools two years ago, last year saved our families over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in college fees, from tuition to textbooks. When you enroll in the Martin County High School Early College Program, everything is free, from your textbooks to your courses, saving families a lot of money and providing our students with life-changing opportunities. This year, we will graduate the first-ever class of Martin County Early College High School Program, the class of twenty-twenty-six, and we have twenty-three students in that program. First-ever graduating class slated to walk across the stage. We couldn't be more proud. Last week, we officially kicked off a new program for Martin County Schools, our Exceptionally Steem Program. This program is designed to bring hands-on, project-based learning in science, technology, engineering, arts and math to our adaptive exceptional children's classrooms. This initiative is ensuring that every child has access to engaging, engaging, meaningful learning experiences within our adaptive classrooms. Our exceptional children's teachers are truly remarkable. They are the best of the best and they have taken this program and this initiative and they have ran with unmatched opportunities for our students. Stay tuned and pay close attention because we're just getting started with our exceptionally steem program. We were honored to welcome Congressman Don Davis to Jamesville Elementary School during the first week of school. Congressman Davis read to our students, toured classrooms and even gave a special recognition on the House floor to our very own Cassie Garrett, who has worked her way up from school bus driver to now a third-grade teacher in the Martin County Schools' system. Her story is a shining example of why Martin County Schools is a great place to work, to grow and to make a difference. This year, we have partnered with East Carolina University to provide weekly support for our beginning teachers. This partnership is helping new educators thrive in their classrooms and ensuring that our students receive the highest quality instruction which they deserve. ECU staff will be present in our beginning teacher classrooms on a weekly basis, observing, providing feedback and supporting our amazing beginning teachers. Our progress and innovation are being noticed across the state. Martin County Schools was recently selected as the twenty-twenty-five Civic Excellence and Innovation Award winner for our dramatic growth over the last two years, particularly in career and technical education, early college programming and overall student achievement. This award was presented at the State Conference of County Commissioners and M C S was the only school system selected as a recipient of this prestigious award. Special thank you to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for selecting and recognizing the growth in Martin County Schools. Even outside the classroom, Martin County Schools continues to shine. Shout out to our athletic programs, specifically our football team, who won the Battle for the Paddle over Burt T. with a score of sixty to zero, filling our community with school pride. This Friday night, while we fell a little short against five A Wilson Hunt, as I sat in the stands at the football game, I was struck by the incredible positive energy surrounding our schools. New uniforms glistened under the lights. Our cheer squad and our dance team led the crowd. The J R O T C Spirit Squad and the band brought energy to the stadium and the stands were packed with family and community members cheering together. In that moment, I couldn't help but think how far we've come in the past several years. Yes, we've made remarkable academic strides, but perhaps even more importantly, we've transformed our culture. We've built a school system even more rooted in pride, connection and shared purpose. With a smile on my face, I felt an overwhelming sense of pride for Martin County Schools. Together, we're proving that Martin offers more and I believe without a doubt, the best is yet to come. Few quick reminders, parents, please be sure to pay your tech fees online. If you need any assistance, don't hesitate to reach out to the school. They can help walk you through the process. These technology fees ensure that we are able to continue to provide one-to-one technology for each of our students, which puts curriculum at their fingertips. These fees need to be paid as soon as possible. Again, if you need assistance, please be sure to reach out to your child's schools. As a reminder of our Martin County High School athletic policies, please, uh, remember importantly that no child under eighth grade may attend athletic events unsupervised. You must be accompanied by an adult, um, when you attend the games. Parents, our annual student enrollment forms are also online for your convenience. Again, we know this is new this year. If you need assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to your schools, but getting these forms completed as soon as possible is imperative so that we have up-to-date data in case of emergencies and so that we have all data available to support your child. Mark your calendars, parents. Uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six after-school program with Boys and Girls Club will be beginning soon. I have the information linked here and this will be on our school website, as well as Facebook page. If you are interested in signing your child up for our LifeWise Academy, that enrollment is also underway and it will be available via website and Facebook page. Don't forget, we have started elementary band. Band begins in fourth grade in Martin County Schools now and we are accepting gently-used musical instruments. We want to ensure that every child has the opportunity to explore their musical talents. Please feel free to drop off your gently-used instruments at central office or any of our school locations. Don't forget, parents, plan carefully. The twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar is located online. Um, you can plan for your entire school year now. Be sure to have your children in the seats as much as possible. They need to be present to learn. Of course, if they're sick, we want you to keep them home and get them healthy, but every day that they can, we want them to be at school so that they are learning. And finally, a special thank you to Woodmen of the World. They donated flags to ensure that every single classroom across Martin County Schools has a flag displayed for our morning pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much to Woodmen of the World for giving us this very generous donation. And finally, we would love for you to be a part of the Martin County Schools' family. Be sure to check out our website, we do have a few positions still available. Remember that Martin offers more, not just more opportunities for our students, but more opportunities for our adults and they are also the highest quality. If you are interested, take a look at how you can be a part of the most amazing school system this side of heaven. Thank you, Chair Purvis. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. White. We always say Martin offers more, but now I see we're gonna be the light. All right, all right. So now we'll move on to our information action items. Ms. Raina? Title one budget.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to present the Title One Budget, or the proposed Title One Budget for this school year. The remaining balance left over from last year is about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. This year, we were allotted additional one-point-six million. So the amount that I have to budget, we have to budget is two-point-three million dollars. So basically, the district administration pays for fifty percent of my salary. Uh, we have some money set aside for parent involvement. We pay for twenty-five percent of the pre-K staff salaries. We also set aside money for professional development. Our professional development was sort of go towards classroom management, vocabulary, instructional technology, uh, to classroom observations and for science kit trainings, along with other things. We also set aside money for software such as Master Connect and iReady. We also pay for five instructional coaches and some ESL tutors. We set aside money for our homeless population and we leave some money aside to make sure that we, we are accounting for any unexpected costs such as salary increases or benefit increases. So the district is set aside, comes up to about one-point-four million dollars. That leaves about nine-hundred thousand left to allocate to schools. This chart displays how much money is set aside to schools. It's based on a formula of the low, the amount of low-income students and the amount of money we are allowed to give per student and a multiplying factor. And that's how we come up with the amount of sub-school allotments, the money we give to each school allotment. So it seems like a lot of money, but a lot of that money goes towards positions. So we pay for five instructional coaches out of the district fund. We pay for seven pre-K teachers and fourteen TAs. We pay for twenty-five percent of that salary. We pay for thirty percent of the salary for a teacher at Jamesville Elementary. We pay for a full salary for a teacher at EJ Hayes Elementary. We pay for one-point-three teachers at South Creek, two TAs at Winston Primary School, one teacher at Riverside Middle School and two teachers and one TA at Martin County High School. By paying for these positions, we're able to lower our student-to-teacher ratio. We also put aside money for parent engagement. We've set aside forty-five hundred at the district level and then we give each student, each school, a certain amount per student that they are, a, a, a certain amount per low-income student. And that's the amounts that it comes up to. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Okay, I would like to request, okay.
I'm just trying to wait a second. Can you give me an example of parent involvement, like from last year or whatever, just what is that?
So many of the schools have literacy carnivals, they have steam nights, they have parent, like the high school has parent guardian nights, whether they bring the parents in and explain some of the things that they need to know about how to make their child successful and some of the upcoming events. We have Fall in Love with Martin, kindergarten registration, those are just to name a few.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, what was last year's, um, expenditures for like the homeless and foster?
The same thing, two thousand.
All right. Any more questions? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the Title One Budget.
The move.
Second. They're properly moved and seconded to approve the Title One Budget. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you, Ms. Raina, motion clear. Now we have Ms. Centaur with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budgets.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Hello. So tonight, I wanted to present the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budgets. Um, as the Board had previously approved the local current expense and capital outlay budget for the presentation to the county commissioners, requesting the funding that we identified the needs for. Unfortunately, the county came back and flat-funded us, um, as they did, the same funding as last year. So for the local current expense, just a few, um, a quick overview. We had requested, um, a little over seven million dollars. The county only appropriated us six-point-two million dollars. And we do receive an additional estimated revenue of about two-hundred thousand. That's fines and forfeitures from the county. So we had to do some budget reductions in order to, um, come within these limits. We are planning to appropriate three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand of fund balance to get in, um, to get our total budget down to six-point-seven million. We, our budget is increased from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six by seventy-three thousand dollars. The reason for this increase is because we have to fund state salaries. Um, we are, of course, the state hasn't passed the budget yet and the House and the Senate haven't, um, solidified what they want to do with state salaries, but we're anticipating, um, a mandated increase of approximately sixty-four thousand. So, um, with that, also our charter school payments increased by twenty-nine thousand and we also are anticipating an increase in parts and supplies. So the increase of seventy-three thousand for this fiscal year, um, really is a conservative amount throughout that. Hospitalization also is increasing by four-hundred-and-five dollars per employee. The, this is also an expense that we have to absorb. Um, and the retirement rate is increasing by point-six-three percent. And again, for all of our locally-funded positions, the state does not allot us any additional funds to cover these increases. We have to absorb that into our local budget. Is there any questions about the local current expense budget?
What does that leave our fund balance?
So our current fund balance is at about three-point-three million, so that will still leave us at three million. Now, with us appropriating the fund balance, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll use it all, but we want to err on the side of caution right now because again, the state hasn't passed the budget and, you know, we'd rather disappropriate it now and not use it versus come to find out mid-year, we're in a pickle.
So what did we use out of the fund budget last year?
That amount hasn't been finalized. Our auditors are still working on that, yes. I do have an estimated amount, but I'd rather wait for them to.
That's fine. I was just curious.
No, no, that's okay. I could tell you, we did not, we did not use what we appropriated last year.
Good.
So, yes, we did, we did well. Any other questions on the local?
Um, I have a question. So on page one, the certified staff travel, is that new, sort of five thousand versus staff travel?
No, that's not new. That's for if any of our certified staff go for professional development or anything like that and we pay their travel, their mileage, that helps cover that.
But that's something that we weren't doing in twenty-four, twenty-five. Am I reading it right? I don't see anything.
No, we did do it, I just didn't have it broken out between certified and classified. We had it in one.
That fifteen thousand.
Yes, ma'am, exactly. So I broke it out, so it was more definitive.
Okay, and then on page two, Ms. Centaur, does subpay for special needs? When you carry over, so are we not gonna have any funds for that?
We do, we have funds for that. We're gonna use our state funding for that this year.
But we'll be, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So we were trying to be more strategic with how we planned our funding this year, so.
Okay, and then on page four, I'm looking at the salary for board members.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
And I'm just curious as to, it looks like, is that a seven percent, something like that? How, what's the seven percent decrease?
Yes, that's because, um, previous board members had higher salary and so, um, retired board members exited and new board members came on and so there was actually a decrease, even though salaries increased for the board by four percent. There was a overall decrease because veteran board members that retired made more than incoming board members and so the rate went down, the actual budgeted amount for the year.
So the budget went down, but what you, the rate that stayed like it is, is that, is that stay?
No, so your, the board salaries are based on what the county commissioners make. You get the same increases as the county commissioners receive and the county commissioners received a four percent increase. So whatever you came on board with, you receive those increases along with the county commissioners and so you all receive that four percent increase with them. They already approved their budget, so we were already able to allocate that. Um, but when you have higher board. But when you have higher board, higher-paid board members that were on the board for thirty years, their salaries were higher, of course, than new incoming board members. And so the overall total budget was reduced.
That explains it.
Yes. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So what has it done to, to the budget, adding the program at South Creek?
Nothing to the local budget. We're able to cover that with state funding and federal funding sources. State and federal funding sources, not local.
Is that just regular state and local?
Yes, we have different pots of money. So the state allocates different PRC money. You can use it for different items. But we have a couple of pots of money, like our low wealth and our small county. Those funding sources are state, and that helps fund those programs. So we can cover that, yes. That doesn't affect the local budget.
So then we're not using any Perkins money or PRC O seven-nine money for that program?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else, besides myself and Ms. Pet?
All right, so we'll move into the capital outlay budget. Again, we had broken out the capital outlay to a ten-year plan to help try to spread out those requests for the county and make it a little more affordable. We requested a little over a million dollars. And they flat-funded our capital outlay at the six hundred and sixty-six thousand, sixty dollars this year, which is the same funding we received last year. Based on that, we did have to reduce some of the projects that we plan to do this year. We plan on appropriating fund balance for rollover projects, and the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, that's capital outlay money from last year that was appropriated. And once we roll over the new year, if they're not completed, it rolls into fund balance, and we have to re-appropriate it to be able to finalize those projects or finish those projects this year. So we'll be appropriating that. And then anticipated lottery funds requested for twenty-five thousand, and that is for paving project. So our total capital outlay budget is eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. We did the projects, the main projects we left in is we prioritized securing the entrance areas for the schools, because that is a high need. We want to make sure our locations are safe. Is there any questions on the capital outlay?
So given by the total budget, we haven't, we haven't had to send back any unused funding that we forgot to use.
Absolutely not.
I didn't figure we could, I was just wondering. Sometimes schools forget, you know, systems forget.
We don't send it back.
No, we don't need to send anybody.
That's right, that's right.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak up and say, I appreciate all the work that y'all have done on that. I know principals and staff worked really hard to kind of make the budget, and I think worked with the county commissioners as well. So figuring out how to best spend it, and safety first, obviously, so I appreciate all the work.
Thank you, we appreciate that. It is definitely a joint effort. Very thin, it gets thinner every year, it seems. But it is definitely a group effort, everyone coming together to collaborate, to use the, you know, the funds the best way we can. So if there's no more questions on the budgets, I'd like to ask the Board's approval on the local current expense and capital outlay budget for the fiscal twenty-six year.
Can we get a motion for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budgets?
A motion, second.
Then properly moved in second to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budgets as presented by Ms. Santura. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
So you got that, Ms. Sheer? We have six, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? You got that, Ms. Sheer? Sixty-one. Thank you so much. I know it's your favorite time of year.
It is, it is.
Now we're going to do the budget.
We're going to go into the budget resolution, yes. So since July one, we've been operating on an interim budget resolution. And now we need to approve our current budget resolution. So this appropriates revenues and budget expenses across all of our funds. So as an overview, our budget resolution, our total operating budget is just over forty-four million. Sixty-two percent of that comprises of state at twenty-seven point four million. Fifteen percent of that funding is local, six point seven million. Ten percent of that is federal, at four point two million. Two percent of that is capital outlay at eight hundred and seventeen thousand. Six percent is school nutrition funding at two point seven million. Five percent is fund date at two point three. I can say that not all of our federal grants have been allotted as of yet. So because the federal fiscal year runs from October to September, we have not received all those, so we are anticipating some more federal funding coming in. And we will do budget amendments throughout the year as needed, as those funds come in. Are there any questions?
Board, budget resolution, any questions?
All right, and I just present this for approval of the Board as well.
Okay, Board, we need a motion to approve the budget resolution as presented by Ms. Santura.
A motion.
Got a motion, it needs seconds.
Second.
Then properly moved in second to approve the budget resolution. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was that?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All opposed, nay. Unanimous motion carried.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right, we're moving on along. Dr. White, data overview.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to take a moment to give a data overview of where we fell last year on our twenty-four, twenty-five results from the Department of Public Instruction. They were released officially last Wednesday. We weren't sure if they were going to officially release on Wednesday or Thursday, so that's why we planned our big celebration for the high school on Thursday, which turned out to just be exceptional. A few notes before we get into some of the data pieces. Something to note is that we did have new standards for science last year. It was a new standard year. So it was the first year of these standards, they had never been taught before. It was also the first year of this science test. So it was a new end-of-grade assessment, or end-of-course assessment in regards to biology for our students. We also implemented new curriculum in grades, kindergarten through eighth grade. So over the year previously, our staff had said that we needed a new curriculum. They requested that we have a new curriculum. And so we went through a year-long adoption process, where we vetted resources, and then the staff actually selected a new reading curriculum, a new math curriculum, as well as new resources for science. And then it's also important to note that on the day, the day that we worked for all year, there was a major testing glitch. The whole system froze, and students sat for more than an hour mid-test, waiting to complete their assessment. Now, in starting with these things, you may think that we're getting ready to talk about our results getting, going down, or having negative outcomes, but we're not. We're actually getting ready to talk about very positive results for Martin County schools. But I did want you to understand those several important pieces. When you implement a new curriculum, research shows that normally when you implement a new curriculum, you're going to have what's called an implementation dip. So your results are going to dip, they're going to go down. That is research-based, nationally-normed. But fortunately for Martin County schools, overall, our schools did exceptionally well. I've got a chart here, just kind of outlining where we are. And then I'm going to go through some of the highlights here. I'm not going to read every number to you. But as you look at this, you can see, when you're looking at your trend data, we know that we made some huge improvements over the last couple of years. So if you look at where we were twenty-two, twenty-three, where we are twenty-four, twenty-five, in the first two columns, you're looking at your achievement score. So you're seeing thirty-six point five to forty-two point seven, fifty-seven point five to sixty-four point seven, sixty-three to sixty-three, so maintaining there. Riverside Middle School, thirty point three to thirty-nine point four. South Creek Middle, twenty-six point nine to thirty-six point one. And Martin County High School, two years ago, at the district level, we know that we had two high schools at that time, but the state reports accountability data at the district level. So we can still look at those two high schools holistically and see that we were thirty-four point two percent proficient at that time in our achievement score. And this year, our achievement score was fifty-six point four, showing some tremendous gains. One of the biggest takeaways from this slide is that you are going to see, two years ago, we had two F schools. And this year, we have no F schools. For the second time in history, last year was the first time, this is the second year in history, Martin County Schools has no F schools. Each of our schools were able to maintain their letter grade with our high school improving their letter grade. You saw that massive jump. Their growth scores also increased significantly, as you can see. And the high school actually moved out of low-performance status in both their achievement. You have to be a fifty-five to move out of low-performance status. And their growth, they exceeded growth. Any school who exceeds growth in the state of North Carolina also moves out of low-performance status. So you can see that the high school moved up to a sixty-two, improving their letter grade. I also want to point out, Jamesville Elementary School, they were very close. Sixty-eight is the highest achievement score that school has ever received. When you get to a seventy, you move into a B school. Rogers Elementary was a sixty-seven, tied. They had received a sixty-seven, I believe it was one other time, under this accountability model. So both of those schools are having a little healthy competition. And you see them smiling right now, because they are both committed that next year, they are both going to be B schools, and definitely one not one without the other. So it's very interesting to hear them talk about. But that's an example of a, of a healthy competition. They were both very, very close this school year. I do want to continue to the next slide and share that our district data soared to six, seven, and eight-year highs across nearly every measured area. I'm going to show you some stats on that in just a second. We had the strongest overall performance since the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. It is important to track our progress since COVID, but it's also important for us as a school system to look pre-COVID. We want to know where we were achieving in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, because we don't want to only do better since COVID, we want to do better than we've ever done. We want to offer our kids more and even better. So that's what we are doing with these slides that we're sharing now. For the second consecutive year, and only the second time in history, we have no F-rated schools. Four of our seven tested schools met or exceeded growth standards. Several schools recorded their highest performance level ever, including Jamesville Elementary School and Martin County High School. And Rogers was tied for their, I believe it was their highest score ever with a sixty-seven. When we think about this last year, it's a, it's a turning point when you look at the data holistically. So our grade level proficiency was a forty-one point eight. And that was, what that means is that forty-one point eight percent of our students, so forty-two percent of our students, achieved proficiency on their end-of-grade assessment. So that was the highest grade level proficiency we have had since the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. When you look at college and career readiness, what is this? Well, the state considers grade level proficiency a three, four, or five, but it only considers levels four and five as college and career-ready. And so that did increase to twenty-one percent, which was the highest since two thousand seventeen, eighteen also. Our ACT performance actually tripled to thirty-eight percent from about, I believe it was thirteen percent last, in the previous school year. And that was the highest since eighteen nineteen. Your ACT is the score that, is the test that students take who want to go to college and who will be applying to go to college. While most schools are still test optional, we administer as a requirement the ACT to all juniors in Martin County Schools. It is a state requirement. Our work keys credentialing rose from fifty-five, rose to fifty-five percent, which was the highest since twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. These are the credentialing from our Career and Technical Education Department, the assessments that they take to demonstrate proficiency within those classrooms. Our English learner progress, so this is looking at students who speak English as a second language. This increased to thirty-four point seven, which was the highest since two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Our graduation rate, our four-year cohort graduation rate was sixty-eight point nine percent last year, and it rose to eighty point three percent this year. That is the highest since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and the second highest ever under this current accountability model. Now, you've also heard us talk about a ninety-four percent graduation rate. That ninety-four percent is for Martin County High School. The eighty point three percent is for the district as a whole. So that eighty point three is looking at every child who entered ninth grade four years ago, and tracks that child all the way till they walk across the stage at Martin County High School. That's the difference in those two numbers. The ninety-four percent are the students that were actually enrolled at Martin County High School. The eighty point three tracks it all the way back to wherever they were four years ago. Whatever high school they were in, they should have walked across that stage last year. So looking at the same thing in different ways. One's your four-year cohort, one is looking at specifically what Martin County High School was. The state also looks at ACT and work keys combined. And this score rose to thirty-five point three percent, which was again, the highest since two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Our math, math course rigor exceeded ninety-five percent for the first time since two thousand sixteen, seventeen. This is looking at all children who took and passed Math Three, which is a requirement under the accountability model. And looking at our continued progress in other key areas, to note, our Math One scores increased by twenty-seven percentage points. That is absolutely remarkable. I want to give a special shout-out to our high school math department. Several of our teachers really dug in. We adopted, at the high school, new, you noticed earlier, I said we adopted new curriculum K eight last year. At the high school level, we adopted curriculum the year before. And so last year, you've noted the massive progress at the high school. They had already implemented their new curriculum the previous year. So they already had a whole semester of teaching that curriculum under their belt. And so that really showed last year, as they were more comfortable with it, and our students really began to thrive. I do want to give a special shout-out. Jane Edmison was one of our high school Math One teachers, as well as Mr. Harmon, did Mr. Harmon also teach Math One? And Mr. Harold and Ms. Sacon. Those teachers really worked hard to dig into this data. And just, that's just a lot of progress to make in a year. In our Math One, we increased proficiency in Math One, Math Three, English Two, ACT, and work keys. The only area that did not show improvement was biology. But I also want to remind you, that was a brand-new test with brand-new standards. And so now, we have a better gauge on what they're going to be looking for in those standards, and how we can better meet the students' needs this year, not only in biology, but in fifth and eighth grade science, where it's also tested. Our ACT scores improved twenty-five percent from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That's a testament to the preparation. We actually brought in a group at Martin County High School to provide ACT support to our students. We were really struggling with ACT. Eleven percent one year, thirteen percent one year. And then this year, we were able to increase that by twenty-five percent. A lot of improvement there. One of the most impactful statistics released is the rise of the high school's graduation rate, which we've talked about, from sixty-eight point nine percent, so sixty-nine percent, to the record-high ninety-four percent for the class of twenty twenty-five. So when you look at the report card, you will see that ninety-four percent when you, for Martin County High School. And when you look at the, the district data, you'll see that eighty point three percent. The district's four-year cohort rate was eighty point three, as mentioned, which is the second highest in, in history under this accountability model. A few school highlights, the school principals are going to dig more into their individual data. This is just the overview. When they come to talk about their school improvement plan, they're going to dig a little bit deeper into their individual data. But South Creek Middle School, I want to give a shout-out for their improved growth. They came within fourteen one-hundredths of a point of exceeding growth. And it is very bittersweet to be that close, because had they been that fourteen one-hundredths of a point, had they got to that two-point-oh, they would have actually exited. had they got to that two-point-oh, they would've actually exited low-performing status, and our entire district would no longer be a low-performing district. So this close, this is the year. But it's nice to see that great improvement in their overall growth. So shout-out to South Creek Middle School. South Creek Elementary achieved its highest-ever third-grade math proficiency with sixty-four percent of students demonstrating proficiency, which is massive improvement for South Creek Elementary School. Just absolutely outstanding. Shout-out to our third-grade team there. Rogers Elementary increased its overall letter grade from a sixty-three to a sixty-seven, again showing great growth. Jamesville earned its highest performance grade ever with a sixty-eight. We were unsure right until the end. We had, we knew we had a shot at the B, and we knew it was gonna be close. And we are proud of the sixty-eight. That is not a disappointment that we didn't reach the B. We're incredibly proud, and I believe this is gonna be our year for a B school in Martin County Schools. EJ Hayes exceeded predicted achievement in fourth and fifth grade reading, as well as fourth-grade math. So the state each year gives us something called EVOs Prediction Scores, and it tells us, based on a child's historical performance, where they should be in order to make a predicted growth score. And EJ Hayes actually outperformed those in these areas. Williamson Primary School is not under the state's, this state's accountability model. Williamson Primary School is, does have data, but it's different. State testing data does not begin until third grade. And so Williamson Primary School actually just receives whatever designation that EJ Hayes does because it's their feeder school. However, because it does have its own data, I did want to share some highlights from that school as well. They take something called the M-Class Assessment, which is focused on reading. And it looks at a child's ability to read fluently, to read on grade level meeting certain targets. And they had tremendous growth, particularly in second-grade reading, gaining nineteen percentage points from the previous school year. So shout-out to Williamson Primary. And Riverside Middle School student achievement grew in every single cohort. So I wanna make sure everyone understands what that means. So when we look at a sixth grader in reading, and then that sixth grader goes to seventh grade. So you take the EOG in sixth-grade reading, and then you take it in seventh-grade reading, you wanna see an improvement in overall proficiency. So you, let's say if they were thirty-five percent in sixth grade, you're hoping for at least forty percent in seventh grade because you wanna see more students reaching that proficiency and therefore closing the gap. And so when we look at Riverside Middle School, and we look at those cohorts of students, every single cohort grew, which is a, a great testament to some great things going on at Riverside Middle School. So very proud of them. Overall, we have some huge celebrations in Martin County Schools. We're not only improving outcomes for our children, but we're changing the narrative about what's possible for students. The work is not finished, and we're not saying that we are satisfied with these results because we are not. There is more work that needs to be done. But we also need to, want to pause and celebrate the tremendous progress and the hard work of our staff because we are moving in a positive direction, and we truly believe the best is yet to come. So tonight, we celebrate the hard work of our staff, of our students. This kind of achievement doesn't just happen. A lot of professional development, a lot of passion, a lot of purpose, a lot of dedication has gone into pouring these, pouring into our children and getting these results. So I do wanna give a special shout-out, not only to our teachers, but every single bus driver, every single custodian, every single child nutrition worker. Every person in Martin County School contributed to the success of our children. So I just wanna take a moment to say thank you to every single school, school family member because you contributed to growth in our children. And again, we're gonna keep working because we know the best is yet to come. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, principals are gonna be digging further into this with you when we present school improvement data.
Four comments, questions?
I have one comment. I just would like to make a statement about the college and career readiness, the work keys, and the graduation rec, rate. I think they've all been affected by CTE. I think that we owe a lot of what our student success is to staying in school when they have an option other than college.
So you mean positively?
Yes. And so I would like to thank our director, Jason Nguyen. And I would also like to thank all of his teachers and support staff for a job well-done. I, I know that academics is one thing, but, but I think learning these skills has made a big impact on, on our graduation rate.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Pat. And I also, on that note, wanna give a shout-out to Martin Community College.
Yes.
Because without their partnership, we wouldn't be able, we're now offering sixty-six graduation pathways. Sixty-six. And some of those are because we've said, Martin Community, our kids are interested in this, and we want this. And they're like, okay, let's go after it. Some of those are because we are doing a better job of taking advantage of what Martin Community has to offer. And so they have been tremendous partners to us. Sixty-six graduation pathways. That just blows my mind, the certificate, the diploma, the degree of a child's choice. The field is open, and we're constantly expanding those. We actually met today about some new opportunities. So thank you, Ms. Pat.
Because Martin offers more.
Because Martin offers more, not only in Martin County Schools, but in Martin Community College. Yes, ma'am.
Four, anyone? Okay, thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you, Chair.
Give ourselves a hand.
Martin County Board of Education will enter closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one A one and A six to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS one-one-five C dash three-one-nine and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one A three to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters and provided, as provided in N.C. General Statute one-four-three dot three-one-eight dot one-one A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act two-zero U.S.C. one-two-three-two G and N.C. General Statute one-one-five C dash four-zero-two. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of contract, proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in N.C. General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one A five.
Have a motion, can we have a second?
Second.
Been properly moved a second ago in a closed session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Closed session, Grant.
To approve all personnel. So moved.
Second.
Moving the property second to approve the personnel. All in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carried. Closed minutes need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the closed minutes. Are we approving with keeping them closed?
Keeping them closed.
Okay. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carried. Have a motion to extend the superintendent's contract to one year. So we need approval for superintendent's contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for raise a hands all in favor of providing extension for superintendent's contract. Please raise your hand. Okay, got it Ms. Sheer.
Yes unanimous.
Unanimous. Alright. No public comment. Announcements. There will not be a September work session. September eleventh twenty twenty five six thirty P M. The South Creek Discovery Academy of Arts, Agriculture and Technology will be held. And that will be at six thirty on September seventeenth twenty twenty five. Any lead meeting at Pasquotank Elementary School. And I do wanna personally say that just really proud and glad that Ms. Cassie got the recognition on the floor in Washington D C. I think she's a Jamesville lady. Alright, give it up for Jamesville.
Yep.
And also want to thank the women of the world. That was in Dr. White's presentation for giving us the flags. Anything else board members? Well then I would ask for a motion to adjourn at eight forty five.
So moved.
Now that was okay strong. Property move the second into adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.